138, 140 Main Street off I-95. Accessor's map R-41 lots 42A, 42B, 42. And Accessor's map R-42 lot 13. Owners Ruth Yserian, Katie Yserian trustee applicant Borrego Solar Systems Inc., Steve Long. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. My name's Weston Standish with Borrego Solar. I have an Anarch Plan Mylar here as well as... Yeah, oh, how many copies did you need?
Three copies.
I brought three copies of the plan. I'm sorry about that. Um, I brought this left. First of all, uh, second of all, just saying, um, this to change the lot lines so that the solar project in Siton Lot that is entitled to the sector's needs while the majority of the other parcels be their group space. Oh, yeah. Sure. So, maybe with your work.
Maybe a small copy of the...
Oh, really? Okay.
I think I have a small copy.
Yeah, alright, very good. Good stuff. Um, yeah, so there's not much to say about this one. Uh, just the purpose of it is to, um, use ownership so the land doesn't run in family or within the trust.
So, did you just want to explain exactly what you have changed?
Yes, um, so, basically, um, there are five lots within, no, not five lots, I'm sorry, four lots. Three lots. Three lots with different parcels within them, A, B, and C, um, that are going to be remaining within Ruth Yserian's ownership. And, um, lot two parcels F, E, G, uh, and actually parcel D as well are going to be within the, uh, Yserian's crossbeats, um, account. And then lot three, uh, will be also within Ruth's Yserian's name.
Just rearranging some lot lines, sir.
Yes, correct.
And could fit.
Yes, it's a, it's a funky design, but, uh, there is an isolated lot beforehand, um, of five by, uh, I-95 on the side, of course, residential lots over here.
Martha, do you have any...
Um, so, I have reviewed two iterations of this plan.
Okay.
And, um, so changes have been made, um, to clarify the, the remaining frontage. I've also discussed it with town council. So, lot two basically is co-terrible with the area of the conservation restriction, which will be eighty-one acres. And, um, council thought that that was very appropriate to do it that way. So, that's, uh, that's basically, basically it. So, there are two, um, this, this area over here, which is part of, part of this larger parcel before is being combined with the lot that Katie's house is on. And then the one that Ruth's house is on is, is actually being reduced in size. And this parcel, yeah, this parcel here is essentially being eliminated.
So, we have the benefit, uh, I think I had the benefit a number of years ago to walk this site. I think we're also able to walk the site. Uh, but this will just allow for better definition of what we're going to be doing for the solar project.
Okay, yes, certainly.
So, basically, if I understand correctly, the new lot you're adding is for conservation restrictions?
Yes, yeah, eighty-one acres.
Is it registered now?
Registered, okay. No, it's...
Which is lot two, correct?
Yes.
Conservation.
Lot, lot two is a conservation area, yeah. Yes, so, lot one, um, lot one is the, or lot, lot three is the Little Truce's house and lot one is the, the one with Katie's house.
So, this discussion will be just about lot lines and making those changes.
Correct.
Um, does anyone have any questions? Concerns?
No, just, um...
Um, a move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? More favor?
So... Thank you. Hold it back now. It's kept here and yours.
I'm not.
Thank you.
Alright, so Martha, so if you can sign the... And then we'll do the rest later.
Are you going to signature up in that top corner?
Uh, yes.
Yes. So, it's just going to go inside the box, I think?
I'm actually unsure.
That should, um...
We just have a date as opposed to a title?
Yeah, so we should sign it there.
Okay, very good.
I'll put the date on that line.
Yep. Today is the twenty-second of January twenty-twenty. Excellent. Yep. Pass that to you. That's okay. Excellent. The matcha pen model. Beautiful. Great. Alright. Very good. Alright, now we're going to have an appearance by Weston Standish, Borrego Solar Systems, for submission of an application for modification of condition number six, which is the color of the underside of the panels of previously granted special permit for a 2.975 megawatt solar energy generating facility at 136, comma, 138, and 140 Main Street off I-95. Accessor's map R-41 lots 42A, 42B, 42, and Accessor's map R-42 lot 13. Owners Ruth and Katie Yserian, trustee applicant Borrego Solar Systems, Steve Long. So, just for clarification, this is just to open, uh, an application regarding just one component, condition six, under our modifications, which has to do with the color of the underside of the panels, which originally were supposed to be a specific color, and now the application is asking for a different color. So, sir, it's all for you.
Correct. Alright, so my application document is here. Let me check. Um, cover letter and some other stuff, but what really matters for this, there's nine copies.
Um, I actually need to stamp them in, so if you can kind of summarize briefly.
What'd you say to me? Yeah, summarize briefly. Um, so basically, uh, there's a little name from here written by Borrego Solar, um, and followed up by a second narrative or letter rather, um, from a renowned national renewable energy expert. Uh, basically, when building a, uh, solar at this size, uh, we, they use a different type of panel than was typically on residential panels, um, these panels only come with white backing, uh, which is the underside of the panel. Now, uh, condition number six had specified gray, I believe is preferred, and that white is not allowed. Unfortunately, it is the only obtainable panel in Massachusetts for commercial scale solar currently, um, and, uh, that's that. Basically, what's in the market right now is, uh, doesn't allow us to obtain a gray back panel. And it's the reason for our application.
Okay. Um, we'll probably get into further discussion once the application, once the hearings open.
Yeah, we'll just require a public hearing.
Yep, it shall. So, with the application being submitted, any general questions for anyone? Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the application to set a hearing date.
I motion to set an application for a hearing date.
And let's see what we have for availability.
So, um...
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do we have an I vote?
Uh, we, well, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay. Yes, we do.
And then for the date?
Yes.
The, uh, I think the likely date would be the February nineteenth meeting.
Okay. Would you like to make that time specific?
Yes, I'm trying to think, do we have anything else going on that night?
Okay, do you want to start off at seven fifteen?
Um...
Would you want to take a look first?
And we've got two on the fifth.
Okay.
So, I think the nineteenth is, is good.
Okay. So, we already have a motion to, to do this, and I'd like to just have maybe that motion modified so that we can put a time specific of seven fifteen?
No, so we'll move.
Great.
Second.
Wonderful. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, super. There we go.
Okay, and since the modification, special permit, it will require a special, uh, yeah, super majority.
Okay.
So, we will need to have four, at least four members, ideally five, participating.
Okay. Beautiful, 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 good. So, that's what we'll shoot for.
Great, and that was sixteenth and nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Seven fifteen.
Alright.
Wednesday, the nineteenth, seven fifteen.
Beautiful, and that's us.
Beautiful.
Thank you so much, Martha.
Thank you, Weston.
Alright, nice to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you too. Have a good night.
See you again.
See you.
Alright.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Most certainly.
Yeah.
Do I butter it, or should I butter it? It's a thing for you. Will they just like, just like the last one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure thing. Um, next on our agenda, I hope I don't damage the last name when I pronounce it, so you're gonna have to help me, Martha?
Jean, shee?
Shee.
Oh.
Jean Shee, Borrego Solar Systems, a request for authorization to proceed with bridge installation and related work. Wonderful. We have a microphone right over there, which would be perfect for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, I'm Jean Shee with Borrego Solar and the project manager of this solar site. And I am here today asking for approval to allow us to get the bridge built, um, prior to the building permit issuance. Um, oh, woo! Sorry.
Sorry, that's my fault.
Never had experience with this before.
I see. You seem to have problems with that.
We do.
Stable now.
It's part of our candid camera approach.
So, I have sent quite a few emails to Martha in the past three weeks. Um, I was just kind of explaining and outlining the scope of work involved in the construction sequence, um, that's required for us to get the road built, to get to the bridge right here, which is crossing the West Stream right now, um, and by April first, 'cause that's when the bridge is actually coming from Contac Engineer Solutions. They're out of main, but the bridge... Okay, sorry.
The mic isn't for amplification in the rooms or the TV audience.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha. Um, so...
Watch out for the wire behind you.
Is this better?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, as I was saying, um, we already placed an order for the bridge, and it's due to arrive on site on April first. So, there's a lot of prep work involved, and it's about seven and a half weeks of, um, construction. So, we really would need for the subs to mobilize on February tenth, um, to start erosion control install, um, and that takes about three days. And then we'll need to set up a pre-construction meeting per the special permit, which is between Borrego, the town, possibly the Butters, um, the DEP, um, he's been alerted to of this work. Um, so I do, I do know that he is, his presence is required. Um, so, we need to set up a pre-construction for that, um, then we can move forward with the road construction leading up to the bridge.
So, I'm sorry, what were those dates again? So, mobilize February tenth?
We are looking to mobilize on February tenth.
And that'll take three days?
Um, no, just one day mobilization, dropping off the equipment, getting the sub set up, and then it'll about take three days to install the erosion controls...
Okay.
...to the bridge. And that's part of the phase A work. This is phase B, which is solar construction. That, we need a building permit to move forward. But we can't move forward with this without having the bridge built.
So, you need a building permit for the bridge?
Well, I'm asking if we can get the bridge built without a building permit.
Without a building permit for the solar array?
Yes.
Okay, and this is, frankly, I wasn't part of the original on this, and it's coming to me called tonight. So, can you give me a little background? What's the problem?
So, I've already submitted the building permit already for the entire project back in December, I think, yes.
Yeah, you actually submitted on November twentieth.
Oh, okay, alright. So, end of November, I submitted that building permit, and I, um, was very well aware that, um, we will not have the building permit issued without having a conservation restriction, a pilot agreement all fully executed and in place. So, we are aware that's gonna hold up the building permit.
Okay, again...
And the issue is...
I, I'm sorry, I became aware of this entire application about forty-five minutes ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, bear with me.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. Okay.
You need, before you can put up the bridge, what do you need, uh, under the current conditions?
Under the current conditions, um, well, honestly, I, Borrego has never built a bridge before, okay? So, I was very fluent with, okay, we need to start solar construction, so, um, we were always given the approval by the building inspector, which we did, by the previous building inspector, Sam. He's, he allowed us to start site improvement work just until we start putting the screws in the ground. That, we need building permit. We are very well aware of that. However, um, due to the time constraints, now this, um, pilot agreement, uh, I, from what I heard from my project developer, won't be ready till mid-March. And the conservation restriction looks like it won't be ready till sometime in February next month. Okay, that's not a problem, but the pilot agreement, that won't be ready till mid-March. That's gonna hold up my bridge construction. That's the issue here. So, that's why I'm asking if I can get approval...
So, there are a couple moving pieces to get this...
Okay, I'm, I'm still at sea here, so...
To get this thing underway.
Okay.
And the conservation, uh, restriction, correct me if I misspeak, we just got kind of wind of a few weeks ago, uh, and it, has it had complete blessing?
No, so what's happened, actually, I had a meeting this morning with Chris LaPointe, so, um, we received a copy from him that had been approved by, um, EEA. Um, and so that's the copy, the version that we've been working off of. Last night, he actually received a version from Borrego with some additional markups, I assume from your legal department.
Right.
Um, so, um, it's, it's still in flux, so that's the version that I'm marking up now with comments from any of you members that have, and I've gotten a few comments from George.
Okay.
Um, so, we had originally hoped that the planning board would be able to bless that tonight and then make a recommendation to the selectmen for next, their meeting next week to sign off on it, and then it could get, you know, signed and recorded. But now it's a little bit behind schedule.
Okay, so that's delayed.
So, that's delayed.
Until at least our next meeting.
Um, I would say, and it depends on what, how, how quickly EEA will turn around any changes and bless the revised version.
So, that's one piece.
So, that's one piece.
So, if I can interrupt, so, the current conditions of the special permit prohibit the bridge going in before the conservation restriction is signed and recorded?
Well, the, the special permit condition said that the conservation restriction and the tax agreement both needed to be finalized and recorded or signed off before the building permit could be issued.
Okay.
So...
That's the building permit for the solar array?
So, that's the building permit for the solar array.
Yeah.
Um, all of this is, is work related to the project. Um, there's actually, um, our acting building inspector feels that the bridge work is actually not something that would be subject to the permit.
The building permit?
The building permit, right. It is certainly part of the special permit work.
Right.
Um, Doug Packer has also said that the bridge would not be something that's subject to the building permit, and the permit, its application itself is just for the solar array.
Yes.
So, that would include installation and the electrical work and so on and so forth.
Yes.
So, before the building permit, I'm sorry if I'm a little dense here.
No, that's okay.
This is, this is complicated, and it's multiple year.
Before the building permit can issue for the solar array...
Yeah.
...the conservation restriction and tax agreement have to be finalized.
Finalized, and the CR has to be recorded.
So, so far, I don't see your problem. If, if, if the, if the bridge is not part of the building permit, is there something else that...
There is.
Okay.
So, well, a couple of things. Um, there is also some, uh, the advice that we got from council was that it would be, you know, at a minimum, the building inspector should have the, the bridge plans, um, on record and all of that, which I think they were submitted with the permit drawn.
It's part of the CDI-FR set.
Right, right, right. Um, ideally, um, it would be part of the permit, but it, it seems that's not really, you know, it's really, it's more site work than building permit kinds of work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, com, uh, council did say that, um, again, ideally, the CR would be recorded before any work was allowed to go forward, or that Borrego should come before the planning board and request a modification. So, that's kind of where we are now. There's a lot of stuff going, going on, and also some, some concern to make sure that DEP, which issued the superseding order of conditions, is aware that this work is going forward because it will need to be in compliance with all of their conditions.
And they are aware.
They are aware, okay.
They are aware, and waiting for authorization.
Okay, so that's, I guess, the, where, I had a conversation with our town planner that it was kind of our feeling the DEP really has to weigh in on this, give them their blessing before we actually can, you know...
Okay, sure, yeah.
That kind of makes sense.
Yes, it does.
What if they were, had to come, come before us for a modification, which I assume would require a public hearing, and so...
Right, and that's one of the questions, um...
What would they be asking us to modify?
Well, that's a good question. Because it's really, it's not, it's not a request for a modification to the terms of the special permit with respect to the building permit...
Right.
Because that's still the conservation restriction and the tax agreement that need to be finalized. So, in any, i- if, if the board were to allow them to move forward with this, it's at their risk because they don't have...
They don't have a building permit in place, right? Right.
Right, so who oversees this as far as the town is concerned?
So, it, um, I think, since DEP issued the superseding order of conditions...
Their first.
They'll be, you know, they'll be looking at it, we're, we will have our, Joseph Watka, our engineer, looking at it. There are a lot of, lot of issues here with stormwater management. One has to do with the infiltration trenches...
Yep.
And soil, soil testing, um, that's gonna need to be observed because those were based on certain assumptions DEP approved, but those assumptions need to be verified in the field.
Yep.
Um, so they're gonna be, and Doug will be looking at it, um, he doesn't have the authority he would be if, if they were operating under the local order of conditions, but he'll be, you know, keeping an eye on it as we request as well.
Because well, DEP superseding conditions are kind of trumpy right now.
Since this is like their first challenge as far as building a bridge, will there be a greater, greater, uh, not restrictions, but...
Inspection?
Inspections.
Well, I would think our building inspector would oversee the bridge safety and, and construction based upon the specs that they have submitted.
Um, you know, as a site work item, I don't, you know, if it were a building structure, absolutely.
Right.
But this is gonna be a structure that's gonna have to maintain heavy work equipment that's gonna go over and...
During the construction phase.
During construction phase.
Is the intention to leave the bridge in place following construction?
Well, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
So, the bridge will vary.
It's permanent bridge. It's called by forty, um, prefab bridge, um, and it just, right after that, and once we get the building permit, then we can cross that over with multiple heavy equipment to start this phase. But after that, after construction is over, that probably will get used like maybe once a year by utility or snowplow or, or KV, you know, yeah.
Or if they're in, God forbid, there's an emergency, the fire trucks will be going over it.
Yes, yes.
You said that was twelve by what?
Twelve by forty.
So, you just raised a question, uh, capacity, capacity of the bridge if fire trucks have to go over it. I know their equipment's gonna be going, going over it, I don't know what their, their specs are.
We spoke to contact, um, it's just like a regular road. Yeah.
And fire has signed off on it.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
And, um, with regards to inspection, uh, we did hire a QA QC firm, they're called, um, Keyville Enterprises.
Okay.
Um, and they're gonna be, uh, helping us doing QA QC when they're assembling it together.
And so they'll be signing off on the construction of the bridge?
And also with our structural engineer.
Okay. Alright, so, with that said, do we have to wait for DEP to give their blessing?
And I think if the board were inclined to allow this to move forward, it could be conditioned.
Conditioned upon their, okay.
But the question is whether you feel it would be appropriate to do that, or whether it should be modification, but as Larry said, it's, it's a little, little unclear what the modification...
I mean, it, it seems to me that if there are no conditions of the special permit that require modification for you to go ahead, then I don't think you need our approval.
Okay.
If there are conditions of the special permit that have to be modified, then it's gotta go through the public hearing process.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it sounds to me like it's, you're, it's really DEP, you need to keep happy here.
Right.
And our building commissioner, of course. That help you or hurt you?
Oh, no, I think the, the, the original start of this whole thing was, I was really asking the building inspector, Sam at the time, but... the building inspector, Sam at the time, but obviously somebody else. If, you know, I mean, he al- already allowed me to do some improvements before the building permit is issued, and now I'm throwing, okay, can I also get the bridge too? So, and here we are today.
So, I'm following up with your thought that we don't really need to, uh, modify what, what is currently existing. I think if we were to allow this to proceed pending DEP sign off, then I think...
I have no problem in principle with that.
I think that, that is a comfortable procedure, really, kind of a...
Fire safety already signed off, I guess, so...
Okay.
I got that letter today.
So, I would, I think, entertain a motion to allow authorization for the bridge installation and related work based upon, um, confirmation from DEP that they have no objection to this proceeding.
Okay.
And with the understanding that Borrego is proceeding at their risk.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, I, I would, some, I would move that.
Would you second that?
I would.
Is there any further discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Was there a sign in somewhere related to this, or?
Uh, no.
It's not assigned.
We are actually fifteen minutes behind. We should have acknowledged the public hearing.
Apologize, I apologize. We are fifteen minutes delayed for our public hearing. Um, and thank you Martha for acknowledging that. I'm sorry we got carried away in discussion. Um, so I would like to continue the public hearing. Special permit renewal application for Seacoast K nine LLC, thirty-five Downfall Road, map forty, uh, R forty-one, lot sixty, owner applicant Jennifer Ford. I'll use her.
Oh, I, when you said continue, I mistook it for the other type of continuing. Good evening, Ben Time, counsel for Seacoast K nine LLC. Um, I'm here really just to, um, verify that on January sixteenth, uh, we notified the board that we had withdrawn our special permit application.
Very good.
That's it.
Beautiful.
And the board does need to devote to accept when it wants to withdraw.
Okay. Um, so, i- in that case, and I realize that there are only, uh, three members who are here for the whole hearing, if I'm not mistaken, uh, unless George is on the phone, or?
Um, he's, he's not, but it's really, it's...
For purposes of this, it's...
It's administrative at some point.
Yes, right. So I would request that, um, in that, in that case, and I, is I, let me just say what I put in the letter just for the, for the record, which is that, uh, Seacoast K nine LLC hereby withdraw, withdraws its application for a special permit. To the extent that the planning board regards our withdrawal as a matter upon which it should take any vote or action, which Martha is saying would be the custom of the board, we respectfully request that you vote to accept, uh, this withdrawal without prejudice.
Would you like to?
Do you move?
Do you move?
I, I move to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate coming in. All right, uh, back to our agenda.
And just to clarify, council has advised that since, since it was withdrawn, you don't need to take any action to close it because there's nothing to postpone now.
Can we ask a question or not?
Shh, if you'd like to ask a question, sure. Come on up.
The procedural? Avery Woodworth, nineteen downfall. Request is withdrawn. The other special permit is null and void because it ran over its time, correct? Basically. So they're now not permitted, correct? Not, what does that mean? Where are we at? Are they out of business? Do they have to shut down shop?
So I think the best way to answer your question is to say that they'll probably, uh, working to, I would think, transition their, uh, their operations. Now, whatever time that would take and how that would be facilitated is not the board's, um, authority. It would be working with the inspection agencies to then make that transition and allow that to occur.
Or now non-existent.
That's not, that's not the case at all.
Temporary infill person, yes. Who doesn't know the history and now we have to go through it all again.
Okay, so, uh, did I answer your question?
Um, yes, technically. I guess the practical question is, how are we gonna make sure she actually stops? That's inspectional. You guys are basically washing your hands of it.
We're not washing our hands. What, we, we had an application that came before the board. The application was withdrawn.
Yes, but there was an application approved eighteen months ago, or whatever it was, that she enacted upon and created a large business that is up and running and still going. So how, how do we?
So I'm going to direct you to the...
To, to building services?
Correct, because that's the, that's the authority that oversees that now.
Thanks.
So I would, I would anticipate that it would transition as was discussed in, in the public hearing.
Will there be a letter from you guys to the building department so they know? Or do I have to go in and inform them because?
You can feel free to contact them if you like.
Well, I know I can, but is there a procedure for you guys letting them know or not?
There isn't.
Well, he does know.
He, he's aware.
Yeah.
But I mean, so, yeah, there was, there was an application, the eth-...
No, no, I just, I, I fully understand all that. I just feel like it's kind of a, okay, see you later. Now we have to fight the course again.
There's been a lot of discussion about this in town.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, thanks. Um, next on our agenda, Adam True requests for amendment to tripartite agreement for subdivision at two fifty-five High Road. William Hurley Way.
Adam's not here.
Okay.
Um, so I did, um, he had sent me a revised amendment to the tripartite agreement, and there was still some issues. It was referring of, uh, to a previous one that was actually, um, closed out and replaced. So there's some, um, corrections that need to be made.
Yeah.
And I didn't hear from him. He's not here tonight, so I think we should just pass this over.
To our next, okay, or, or to when it's ready?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, continuing along, we have old business update of our proposed zoning amendments.
Now, if there's anything we want to talk about tonight, or wait until our workshop on Monday?
So we do have a workshop on Monday, uh, that we will be continuing, uh, our discussion on zoning amendments, um, which is, will be an open public discussion for anyone who would like to, uh, come by and listen. So I think we should probably hold our discussions for that time.
Well, actually, I, I could add something at this point. Um, and this really goes to the, um, where reporters, the liaison to the ZBA. But I went to the meeting Thursday night, and the discussion did come up about possible zoning bylaw amendments regarding the definition of roof height, and, uh, in particular with, uh, a concern over, particularly Plum Island with the addition of roof, uh, decks and that type of thing. So I asked Martha to put it on the agenda for this Monday.
Okay, and that's at the request of the ZBA?
The ZBA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
For discussion.
Okay, great.
Right, so I've put it, and I have put it on the agenda basically as a, a new item.
Okay.
That'll be one PM?
One PM, yeah.
On Monday, workshop.
I did pull the Newburgh port one up. We have copies, copies.
Thank you.
All right. Um, continuing, update of Borrego Solo one thirty-six conservation restriction.
Well, I think we pretty much covered both of these items, uh, earlier in the conversation with Gene.
Mm-hmm.
So just to, just to repeat, the conservation restriction is still in process. We've got some new comments from Borrego as of yesterday, so, um...
Good. Continue, continue along.
So, continue along. Did anybody have a chance to review the earlier version and have any comments for me?
I have, but I'm probably gonna read it one more time.
Okay. I, I did, um, tell Chris that I would do my best to get him our comments tomorrow, but, you know, if there's anything you have in the next day or two, I could certainly send those along as well. I did get comments from George, but he's the only, only one so far.
Okay. All right. New business fiscal year twenty-one, planning board and planning department budget.
So, um, Tracy's in the process of putting together the FY twenty-one budgets. Um, I did send, um, send the draft budget to you, um, the other day and have hard copies in your packets. Um, basically, it's looking at a, a two percent cost of living raise for staff. The planning board stipend would stay the same as it has been, which is sixty-five hundred dollars total. Um, I don't see any need to increase the, um, the expense budget, so I'm recommending that that be level funded for next year. There's a kind of a spreadsheet on the first page that has a little bit of a breakdown of what all those things, all those items are. Um, and then we are also responsible for certain MVPC, uh, cost to the town, including their annual assessment. And for several years during the recession, they didn't increase it at all. It was a zero, zero percent increase, but since the economy's gotten better, they've gone back to increasing it two point five percent a year. Um, you know, based on Prop two and a half.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the commissioners will actually be voting on this at their meeting in February, so it'll be set then, but I've, I've estimated a two point five percent increase.
So it's a sixty-four dollar increase?
Sixty-four dollar increase.
Okay, yep.
And then, um, the MVPC, other, other items that we, um, are responsible for is pictometry, MIMAP, and the assessor map update and parcel data update every year.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm also recommending that this be level funded, um, but I've shifted the amounts a little bit. The pictometry flyover is gonna be a little less than we had estimated last year. What, what we're doing is breaking it out, the cost over, um, three fiscal years, so that, that basically keeps this line item pretty level funded for us. Um, MIMAP is, um, staying the same at, at two thousand, and then we're looking at, at updating a few layers and things on the parcel, um, the assessor's map. So I've, I've bumped that up, but the bottom line is still the same. And there's some flexibility within this.
So did you cho- just wanna, uh, discuss briefly the benefit of those, those tools that we have and why we use those?
Um, sure. And MIMAP is, um, is something that I look at every single day. Um, looking at parcels in town. It's got the layers for wetlands and conservation areas and all kinds of things. And, and as a planning tool, um, and to answer questions that I get every day from people about parcels and what can be done. And the link to the assessor's database, it's just an invaluable tool for us. Uh, pictometry, MIMAP has aerial straight down shots, but pictometry is actually a three dimensional. So you can look at things both straight down with or without parcel, um, boundaries. And also in three D, you can do measurements of vertical height, looking at it in three D, and you can look at it from virtually any, any direction. So if you're trying to really zone, hone in on a parcel and, you know, understand how the structure sits on it, or, you know, what the surrounding area looks like, that's also an invaluable tool. And police and fire use it frequently for public safety purposes. If they get a call to, um, a site where there's an emergency or a fire or something, they can, they can look at pictometry and figure out the best access and how best to stage their equipment and that kind of thing. DPW uses it. Um, MIMAP is tied into, um, our stormwater, um, mobile app. So James is using that. Um, and that's something that's not in our budget. That's in the stormwater TBW budget. But they've been using that to do an inventory of all the catch basins and outfalls in town, um, what direction they run in. They've numbered them all, so now that will help us in terms of cleaning out those catch basins, um, and meeting other requirements of the MS four stormwater general permit, which is in place. Um, so all of this sort of ties back to their, their parcel mapping. And then the assessor's maps are the big things that you see at the, the assessor's counter that are the very large format that people can come in and take a look at if they wanna see their parcels. And they're also up online. So, I mean, all of this for planning purposes is invaluable.
I was just gonna say, invaluable tool that we're very, very lucky to have as a resource for what it's costing as well. Yeah. Big bang for the buck.
And again, for anybody who hasn't had a chance to use these, I'm very happy to, you know, give a quick tutorial. Um, MVPC also has links on the website, um, to tutorials for, for MIMAP and pictometry and other things. And, um, if nothing else, it's a lot of fun to use as well, but just a hu- huge asset.
Any questions? Did you bring your phone? All right, excellent, excellent. Okay, um, then I think I would entertain a motion to approve the budget.
I'd move to approve the budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. Moving along, uh, new business housing. So we have met with MVPC, uh, the meeting consisted of Damon, myself, and Martha, with Nathan's last name is...
Nate Robertson.
Nate Robertson. And, uh, we started this discussion last year and we're continuing into this year to see if there are creative ways or things that we could be thinking of to address some of our housing needs within our community. As we all know, we have significant concerns with affordable housing, uh, and what types of plans make sense for our community with the resources that we have and the limitations that we have, uh, based on infrastructure, based on, uh, uh, site conditions. And, uh, so we're trying to look at alternatives, and we're trying to be proactive on to see if there are any ways that we can attract, um, user-friendly developers to our community that might be interested in doing something. So it's a discussion and work, uh, that is open. We're trying to, uh, maybe see if there's anything, new things that could facilitate, uh, some good outcomes for folks.
Are we looking into, um, prospective lands that can be developed with like, for affordable housing? Do we have those type of parcels already laid out so developers can come in with maybe prospective offers for the, the existing landowner?
So historically, we've identified areas that, uh, were, were felt to be appropriate site developments.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so those have been identified. And I think at this time, we're just trying to think of other designs that might be beneficial, because some of those sites have limitations.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting challenge, because we do have lands. And, um, oftentimes developers or development concepts don't necessarily lend to what we're trying to achieve with regards to affordable housing, because the motivations and the agendas are different based upon who the players are.
Right.
So to answer the question, yes, we've identified sites, and we'll probably continue to see if there are other sites that might make sense. Um, but you're welcome to participate when we have the discussion. I think our next meeting, do we have a date?
Um...
Where are we going to work on a date?
I think we're gonna work on a date.
So when I know that date, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Um, because, yeah.
I appreciate that.
You know, it's, um, it's, it's interesting, because we're, we're trying, you know, to really think outside of the box of what makes sense. Um, there, there...
What's gonna still, uh, maintain the integrity of the community as well as bringing up all the housing needs that are, that we have to bring forth to the table?
So our, the, the goal is a ten percent, um, affordable housing.
Well, that's the state.
The state, the state.
Mandate.
Right. State mandate, then that way we, we have a little bit of a safe harbor from developers. Now, right now, we're currently at three point...
Five.
Percent. Um, so, um, we're trying to see and explore ways that maybe we can change that. But keep in mind, for every home, four homes, six homes, ten homes, s- small developments that take place, that takes that number and it makes it further and further and further away.
The three point five.
Three point five. It gets smaller and smaller as each new house is, is developed. So...
So when I first started, it was four, four point something, and now it's down to three point five.
Because we're just developing homes that are not...
Affordable?
They're not affordable. And, you know, folks want, you know, larger homes, larger parcels. Um, so to get a developer who's, who'd be willing to think of, you know, um, a different design, different concept, uh, within our current zoning, you know, and or modifications that would be appropriate. So we're, we're looking at different aspects.
Right. I mean, some of this, it's, it's kind of a three-pronged thing. One is, is, you know, really now looking at our housing production plan, which did identify about eight sites, I think that we felt would be, you know, lend themselves to, um, residential housing. Some of them were multifamily, some of them were mixed use, um, some of them would be most appropriate for OSRD type, type things, which, you know, might or might not have a bonus unit, um, because of an affordable unit that's not gonna increase our...
Our percentage.
Percentage, specifically. But, you know, one, one goal would be to try to get as close as we can to our ten percent, which for a community like ours without infrastructure is quite challenging. And the second really is to meet the, the demonstrated need in town of housing that is, you know, not necessarily on our subsidized housing inventory designated as affordable, but meets the needs for young families and for our older population who want to downsize but stay here and can't afford to buy anything in town, or young families who wanna stay here, or, you know, young people who have grown up here who can't afford to buy in town.
And, you know, one of the tools that we have, uh, that's already designed, or that has been designed, is our accessory apartment, uh, design, which allows for, um, an accessory apartment to be designed in a, at a home with its tie-in to the, to the home, uh, you know, electricals, uh, uh, well sewer, if that's the case, with a certain footprint that must be less, uh, no more, greater than one-third of the existing home. Uh, so all the utilities are tied in, and we have allowances for, for that to, uh, to allow for, uh, folks to age in, in their environment appropriately, to have family members or someone else to be in that, uh, uh, type of situation. And we're one of the few communities that promotes the concept of that. one of the few communities that promotes the concept of that, um, to-
And one of the few that allow them in detached structures as well.
Right. Uh, you know, other communities, they, they're really firming upon that. So we're trying to, that, that's an avenue-
Now, is this like in reference to, uh, the two facilities that are in Byfield?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Uh, so if you had, if you wanted to build an accessory apartment, it could be attached or detached. Um, and it would have to, it has certain requirements, uh, with regards to size, but you could, uh, uh, have that apartment or that accessory living, uh, space. And if I'm speaking correctly, please, uh, let me know, uh, that a family member could stay in, or if you wanted, uh, someone to stay there that could help with supplemental income so that the, the family could stay in, in that residence and maintain it. Or if you wanted a family to start in a smaller space, th- this would be a tool to do that. So it's, it would be a way to start to promote affordable housing within a family unit.
Okay. So has the town adopted a different, um, view as far as, um, I believe it used to be that if you wanted to put an addition on for, um, a family member, that it had to have a common area and they actually had to be combined, actually an attached unit?
So there's two ways it can be. And this has been on the books for a number of years, a number of years. It can be a, a separate detached structure or it can be attached to the structure.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's two mechanisms. So it's actually a very user-friendly approach to try to create housing on an existing lot.
Right. I mean, there's, there's certain, as, as Pete said, there are certain, certain,
Requirements.
You know, size requirements and things like that, which are all spelled out in the bylaw pretty clearly.
Okay.
So the, um, if you're doing accessory apartment that's attached, that's by right. If it's an accessory apartment in a detached structure, that requires a special permit from the ZBA.
Okay.
So it's a wonderful tool. It's been in place and I think it's probably something that we should really try to promote, uh, to have-
I agree because I was not aware when we put up our second building on our property.
Mm-hmm.
There had been a question, could we put in plumbing and things of that nature? And we were told at that point in time that no, that you could, it had to be connected to the existing building.
So this, yeah, this accessory apartment, uh, by law went into effect, is it seven years ago?
Can't remember exactly when the first one, but, you know, twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-ten.
Cause I remember, I think that Doug was on that board, cause I remember coming before that board to petition for that.
Oh, for the ZBA?
Yeah. And I think we were the first applicant to do that because I hadn't done that before. So it's a great tool. It's there.
So, all right. So the, the, uh, the dates line up to, I, I was prior to that.
And so, you know, again, I think we, we promote this. We-
Yes. So that, that's, I think that's a great idea.
So how does that differ from a, to family?
Um, they can't be equal in size.
Okay.
So, um, for an accessory apartment, there's a minimum size for your dwelling, which is sixteen hundred square feet, your primary dwelling. And then the accessory apartment can be, oh, of one-third of that, up to a thousand square feet would be the maximum. Um, and the detached accessory apartments are allowed only, um, I think on sixty thousand square feet.
Of the lot size?
Lot size, forty thousand. So un- unlike a two-family, which is, you know, more-
Requires sixty thousand square.
Well, it's, requires sixty thousand square feet for, if you have public water.
Okay.
Or eighty thousand if you don't.
Okay. Uh, the electrical has to be tied in. So one electrical service, one septic service.
Yeah.
Uh, and one, uh, well-
Heat, heating service?
Heating could be independent.
Okay.
But so basically it's all run through one, as opposed to, you know, having, um, separate metering.
It makes so much sense.
It does. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful bylaw. It really is. And i- it's something that I think we promote more of. Uh, and we advocate folks to try to do this and we can start to meet our needs, uh, for accessory living, affordable accessory living, uh, by a different me- method than what the, what the state is mandating.
Right. I mean, we have explored the possibility, you know, what, what would be involved if we were to try to get these on our subsidized housing inventory. And it requires a deed restriction and, and that may not be particularly, um-
Comfortable to most people.
Yeah.
It's-
So in the event that you wanted to sell your property, there would be a restriction on your deed on how that would all happen?
Yeah. Well, it's deeded. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the accessory apartment is deeded. One requirement is that either the accessory apartment or the primary structure need to be occupied by the property owner.
Okay.
For at least six months of the year. So you can't do that and then rent out both things. You have to-
Live there.
Have to live there.
Understand.
Thank you.
Is the town, are we being penalized for not meeting the ten percent? Are we missing out on something by not meeting the ten percent?
Um, the issue with not meeting the ten percent is that we are then, um, we don't have very much control over any 40B applications that we get. So the one at the end of Pearson Drive, for example, if we had met our ten percent, it would be a very different situation than it is for us.
Okay. So that is the, the goal is to meet the ten percent.
Well, and to, and to try to, and to try to encourage affordable housing because, you know, if a family's starting off, it's-
How many communities statewide meet that ten percent?
You know, I think that, um-
Did anybody listen to the governor's, I think it was last night, he was talking about this very subject.
I did not hear his speech last night.
Yes. He had a state, the state was talking about this housing thing and it's not unique to this town. It's, happens a lot. And, um, I, there's rumblings from the state level to, um, override cities and towns zoning law to meet a standard. Um, there was an article in, I believe it was an article in the MMA magazine that I got. And I'm gonna go to the meeting this, this weekend. I'm gonna see if I can find out more. But, um, housing needing, meeting the needs of affordable housing, um, I think is on the radar of the state.
You know, in-
I think it, it has been for a while. I mean, there's been legislation, legislation, um, uh, in various forms. I think, yeah, the legislature's been trying to pass to make it easier, um, to, uh, not require two-thirds majority for zoning changes, um, things like that.
Right. They talked about that. Yeah. They want the super majority. They don't want to have that. They want to do away with that. Um, there's, they're going into their arsenal to figure, figure out what they can do to try to, you know, calling them the snob, the snobblers.
Right. The problem is they don't recognize that for communities like ours with no infrastructure and poor soils, um, it's very difficult. Um-
It's not a, it's not a matter of not in our backyard. It's a matter of we can't do it, even if we want to in our backyard because our conditions won't allow it, which is, which is very different. And for communities like ours, uh, that don't have enough infra- uh, that don't have complete infrastructures throughout the entire community, it's very difficult.
It is very difficult. And so, you know, unfortunately, 40B is, I guess, like many things, it's sort of one size fits all. And it really, in practicality, it doesn't do that.
So that's why we're, we're trying to really promote this other concept, you know? Um, and if the state would be willing to, uh, you know, in some way, look at, you know, if we, if we create a pool of housing that, you know, is meeting the, the desire, but just by different means, I mean, that's achieving a goal that we want to achieve.
Martha, I interrupted you. Do you have any sense of how many communities statewide meet the ten percent?
Um, you know, I don't, but I can find out.
No, it's, I'm just idle curiosity.
No, it's-
Didn't we look at something, Nate had something, there was only one or two that, that met in our service area.
Yeah. I mean, there aren't many. It's eas- it's easier for the bigger cities or, you know, larger communities to do it. Um-
Do you think Salisbury meets it?
Yeah. Salisbury meets it. I think Georgetown does because they've got that big rental complex. And if you have rental housing that goes towards your, your inventory.
Yeah. A substantial portion of that is-
Right. Right.
Affordable housing.
But I think Amesbury is there. Um, I'm sure, like Lawrence is there. I don't know about Haverhill. But, you know, they've, they've got the infrastructure.
So Gemwana helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Had the village at Little River been, uh, been approved, I think that would have gone a long way. I probably would have met it completely.
Yeah.
Water under the bridge.
So that's kind of what we're working on with that housing discussion and that's with MVPC, which, uh, and it's very helpful, uh, and fruitful discussion and that will be continuing. Okay.
Do you want to know when the next meeting is sometime?
Yes. I actually, we'll probably know in the next couple of weeks when our next meeting is with Nate.
Yeah. 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 He sent, uh, he sent-
I did an email today.
Actually have a chance to-
Yeah. I don't. Um, town planners report.
All right. Um, just a heads up on a bunch of things that are coming our way. Um, so, uh, the Governor's Academy, the French Student Center, um, is ready to start construction. So I actually have a pre-construction conference, uh, with them next Tuesday. Um, and one question I actually had for the board, the site work is really fairly minimal. Um, so a question I had for you all is whether, whether you would like Joe to be involved in, in that and do inspections or not. Right now, he had submitted, um, you know, his estimate just for the review of the, the application.
What's your feeling?
You know, um, we've got the, the rain garden there, um, not really a whole heck of a lot else.
Because it's in the same footprint and it's-
You know, they're not doing major site clearing, regrading, uh-
Parking's stay the same, right.
So-
And the town's inspection services will be involved, you know?
Right. Right. He's already had, um, Bob's already been out and had a meeting there this week, um, this week or last week with the fire department. And, and I will invite him to this pre-construction conference as well.
So your feeling is?
So I think that, I don't think there's really a lot that needs to be, but it's really up to you guys.
Any thoughts or feelings?
Like you said, the rain garden, like patio design, things of like that nature, which are really just like, not much of an impact as far as changing the layout of the land. So I don't really think that, you know, continuous inspections need to be done.
I tend to agree.
Okay.
Yeah. It's fairly straightforward. And if you said this, not like there's not gonna be anyone there.
Okay.
For inspection.
All right. There you have it.
And it's really, I think, um, yeah, minimal impact to the town road.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. So, okay.
Yeah. The, the, what a crosswalk is something.
Uh, is that into the parking lot, the crosswalk?
That's in the cross, oh, that's in the parking lot from the, from the accessible parking spaces. All right. Good. Um, then tomorrow, um, I'm having a meeting, um, with the person who bought the one oh eight Main Street property at auction. Um, w- um, he'll be coming in a meeting with Doug and me to review preliminary subdivision plan.
Yeah.
Um, and Eric Botterman is gonna be coming in to review a, sort of a draft version of a definitive subdivision plan for the sixty-eight Green Street property that the board approved the preliminary plan for recently. Um, I am also having a meeting with the person who has just purchased two seventeen and two twenty-one High Road, um, to, um, talk about what they're planning to do there. Um, and some concerns and questions they have. So all of these things are be- coming down the pike fairly soon.
So it's gonna be a little busy again.
It's gonna be a little busy again.
Or continuation of busy. Okay.
Right. Um, as far as the, um, the public hearing for the expansion of, uh, Newbury South stor- storage that has been advertised, um, Joe was giving us an estimate for inspections. So I should have that shortly. And the goal will be to get his comments before the public hearing opens.
Yeah. When is that scheduled?
Uh, the fifth.
How many units is he, um, looking at?
He's looking at, at doing four-
Four buildings.
Buildings. But they're essentially double buildings. There'll be a firewall in the middle of each room.
So would it sit approximately a hundred?
It's the size, it's the size of the, the current buildings, uh, times two.
Times two.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's actually on the, the reduced drawings that I, I gave you tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, and a new, um, uh, constructed wetland for Stormwater Management. Doug is very happy with the constructed wetland that they did for the first phase, the first two phases. He said it runs very clean and the site is spotless.
There, there was a, you know, I'll, I'll talk about the conservation report, but yes.
Okay. Um, so I think, um, we did have a meeting this morning for the building project.
How did that go?
And that went fine. We got our first requisition from the contractor, all general conditions related to kind of mobilization and stuff like that. The site sign was approved, which you see on the table there.
Okay. Did everybody see this? I haven't seen it either.
So I don't know where on the site that's gonna be well painted. Um-
So we just, we decided on what's going to be, what it's going to look like for appearance?
Well, that's the rendering that was provided before. So-
Okay.
Um, uh, the deputy chief has requested one change to the layout, which is being, um, internally to increase the report writing area for police officers and move some, uh, all of the IT equipment up, up into the, um, into the attic space. So that'll be required some reconfiguration. So, um, context, the architect is getting that, uh, will be doing design and getting that priced out and that'll come back to the committee.
Okay.
See the cost implications of doing that. But functionally, it's, it's fairly input.
Okay.
Um, they did, um, in trying to determine the depth of a drain pipe going from the uh, uh, catch basin to, um, to the outfall, it was actually nicked by, by the equipment and, and damaged. So there's discussion now about repairing, replacing, et cetera.
Who's responsible?
Yeah. I mean, they're responsible for the repair, um, but it may be an opportune time for the town to actually replace it. Um, so that was, that was also discussed this morning.
Things happen.
That's, that's, um, that's been there for a while.
It's been there for about forty years.
Yeah. So might be a good time.
Yeah. And it's corr- corrugated aluminum. So, you know, I think the, uh, proposal would be to replace it with probably PVC. But it, some, um, some of the infrastructure's going to be going underneath it. So they've got to make sure that, um, it's sized to appropriate, allow that appropriate.
Is something they're gonna try to tie into the, um, Stormwater Management System for to, instead of going into the pond out back that-
They looked into, they looked at tying it into the, um, Stormwater Management System that's been designed and that would actually be more expensive. There, there's a headwall uh, for the existing pipe at the pond right now. So I think the thought is it'll be least expensive just to, to replicate the run that it's doing right now.
Okay. And the project will continue onward.
And the project will continue onward. I think they're, they're, um, still working out, um, they've got approval of, uh, not lead, uh-
Mitigation.
Mitigation plan. Um, so-
How does that get disposed of?
Oh. Do you have any garbage bags at home?
It goes to a special disposal site.
Yeah.
And they've identified one.
Oh, good.
So.
Very good. Very good. Liaison reports, Board of Selectmen.
Uh, the last Board of Selectmen meeting was a little more on the court side. It ran pretty smoothly. Um, they, um, there was a public hearing for a change of ownership interest for Rustican, which the, the owner of CK Pearl, who was, um, who, the owner of Rustican had been the exec chef, um, just to reduce, um, Rustican's owner of time spent on site because he's just there almost twenty-four seven. And then the other was a change of stock interest for Plum Island Grill. Um, there was no representative on site and both were approved. Um, and there was an appointment to the town of Newbury Town Library of Alexander Burke to, uh, finish out a remaining term. And he's, he's a hoop. And then most of the rest of the meeting basically was, um, renewing business licenses. Um, uh, the Council on Aging is, um, looking for a larger facility with a lot more privacy. Um, they're not looking for a brand new building, but if they could get something that was, um, suitable for their needs. Um, right now they're in a facility that it's, uh, it's too small for the number of the peo- number of people that actually attend. Um, and let's see. The Massachusetts Housing Authority has approved the housing-
see, the Massachusetts Housing Authority has approved the housing for, site for Byfield Estates Project eligibility.
So back to the Council on Aging. I remember there was a square footage, uh, I think, size per, per population.
They have, they have sixteen hundred square feet, which is, they have about a thousand seniors, which comes to one point six square feet per person.
And it's supposed to be.
And it's supposed to be five to six.
Five. Okay. So do they have a site, uh, that they're looking at or?
No, but they just wanted to, uh, they actually had had their meeting either that morning or the day before. And, um, so they just wanted to make a presentation.
Gotcha.
Um, but as they said, that, you know, as long as it's handicap accessible and the space was suitable for their needs, they don't, they're not necessarily in wanting to build a new structure. Anything that will suit their needs will be acceptable.
Okay.
Which I thought was pretty cool. What's their actual utilization? How many people use it? About a thousand. Really? Mm-hmm.
For all services.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you, thank you. Conservation Commission met last night of interest for a couple of public hearings. Um, that would be interested for our board would be, uh, uh, Bill Difresco, um, with regards to self, uh, storage, uh, development. Um, I think, uh, CONCOM wants to wait to hear from, you know, from Joe, uh, with regards to stormwater before they sign off on it. So that would be the only component that would affect us. Uh, but there was something really, and, and along the lines, yes, Doug commented how wonderful those, uh, retention ponds work and perhaps the, some of the finest designs that he's ever seen. And the cleanliness of the site, he commented on, Bill kind of took pride in that because he says he's out there every day picking up stuff and keeping the place clean. And I'm sure he's meticulous about it, which is great.
Sure is.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's nice to have a, a business that's, that's growing, developing and doing it the right way. So that's, that's nice. Um, so I, I really gained an appreciation for Doug's insight and wisdom last night. He was, um, we were, there was a strategic compliance that was looking to be released. And it was a parcel on Northern Boulevard. And it's something that started a number of years ago. And it really was almost like a study, an environmental study that would be great for high schools because it showed the beauty of what a dune with dune grass will do as opposed to a, as opposed to a parcel that does not have a dune or dune grass and what happens over these, these series of years and how the storms have a truly detrimental effect to those folks who want to look at the beach right from their window or right from their patio, you know, because it looks good.
Where they're eliminating the natural protection.
Protection, protection. And it really is, puts that, that, that structure at risk and the structure's contiguous at risk. But he had these aerial shots and it showed over ten years what happened to this parcel. And I, it was just a great study. I said, bring it to Triton and have them do something about it because it, it was, it was perfect. You know, but I was really thinking about how the concept really has an effect. And it was shown graphically. So, um, I really, like, I really get a different level of appreciation. So, um, but that was that. CONCOM. Okay. ZBA.
Uh, actually, I already touched on it earlier.
So we're good.
Yeah.
So the, uh, the request will be from ZBA for us to look at that, uh, the heights.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, MBPC.
Um, just on the ZBA, Eric did not talk to me today after the meeting. Yeah, yeah. I thought it was going to come down, but he didn't. So, um, MBPC, the big, uh, big thing from last week's meeting was, um, uh, the search committee made a recommendation for a new executive director. And that recommendation was approved and the terms of the contract were worked out and accepted. So, uh, the new executive director is Teresa Park, who was the chairperson of the commissioner. She resigned when she submitted her application, but, um, I think she'll be. Be a, a great, uh, person to follow in Karen's footsteps.
Very lucky to have that, uh, organization in our backyard.
Oh, they are invaluable.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, any other things to be discussed tonight?
Okay, moving forward.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.